I get my call and order this meeting of the District 200 School Board. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call a roll?
Mrs. Crabtree?
Here.
Mrs. Erickson?
Here.
Mr. Gambiani?
Here.
Mr. Hamlin?
Here.
Mr. Matheson is absent. Mr. Paulson?
Here.
Mr. Berman?
Here. Would you please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, everyone. Ask for a motion and a second to suspend the rules and return to workshop.
Someone.
Moved by Mr. Paulson.
Second.
Seconded by Mrs. Crabtree. Mrs. Hutchinson, would you please call a roll?
Mr. Paulson?
Yes.
Mrs. Crabtree?
Yes.
Mrs. Erickson?
Yes.
Mr. Gambiani?
Yes.
Mr. Hamlin?
Yes.
Mr. Berman?
Yes. The motion to suspend the rules and return to workshop setting is passed. Dr. Drew.
Thank you, Mr. Berman. So, we have two topics for the board tonight. And again, just by way of reminder, we've geared our committee the whole work in presentations and discussions generally around areas within our strategic plan. So, the last couple of years, we've had this February conversation focused on providing an update on FIT and then kind of lead that into the master technology plan, which is going to happen again tonight. And I do know that when we talk about FIT, just by way of reminder, we're talking about the component of learning that isn't necessarily easily measurable. So, our learning environments and how we're trying to transform our learning environments, these are not the metrics that are kind of simple numeric metrics that allow us to kind of measure progress with students. I think measuring what the learning environment looks like, feels like, transforms like for kids is a little bit more complex. But FIT's done a great job the last couple of years of kind of mapping out this transition. And so, I'm going to pass it over to Faith and let her take up with FIT.
Great. Thanks so much. We have a lot to cover. I'm going to talk a little bit about how the staff learning environment has changed a lot to meet our future of instruction and technology vision. Also, give you the results, as I did last year, to our FIT survey that we gave to staff. I'm going to weave in some of our PLC data because that is being impacted by some of the things that we're doing with FIT. I've got some fun facts around Google tools and some other technology tools that we've been using. And then, I'm going to finish with our data on universal access, which if you remember, that is how are we doing in having the right devices at the right time when students and staff need them. Because a lot of this weaves in and out, I'm going to ask if you can to jot your questions on the side and hold your questions till the end. Because as I worked through it, like, there were a few things that I wanted to know right at when we were talking about staff survey that became a little clearer later on. So, just jot them down and we'll keep going. Right. Just always put this everywhere. The staff gets a little sick of it. They think I should have a bumper sticker on my car. But this is our vision for learning and all the things that we're working toward. And if you think about where we were when we were talking about Vision 2018 and we were talking about the vision of where we needed to go, so much of this is even more resonating with staff than it was prior. A reminder, this is the vision statement across the top and then the reflection piece. And what every building was working on this year was differentiation, personalization, and individualization. And we came upon that decision. Is that me causing the feedback? All right. Well, I'll just keep going if I need to change how I'm holding the mic. Let me know. So, this was based on not only our district FIT team making this decision, but also from the staff survey that we put out last year about where they thought we needed to go next. And this year, across the district, we've been working on how do we make learning more personalized and individualized, not only for students, but for staff as well. So, every building wrote a goal to go along with that. And then, they also picked a goal. They also picked another area that they thought was most crucial for their school improvement plan, for where their staff was at, for where they wanted to take learning. So, that in and of itself was a little differentiation where schools got together and had a big discussion about the FIT guide, and they decided on their own the one additional area to work on and put it into their school improvement plans. So, this caused a whole lot of changes in professional development. If you think back not too long ago, the way to do professional development is you brought in an expert, or maybe I got everybody into Hubble Auditorium, and we talked, and everybody had the same experience. As you know, that's not how real learning really happens. It's when you get in and you wrestle with it, and it's individualized. So, we've been creating experiences like that for our staff where they might come to institute day, but there are 10 different sessions that they can choose four of that really meet their needs or divide and conquer by their PLCs. Many of the principals this year did personalized learning with their staff where their PLCs set up a goal in October that they were wanting to study and then spent time at each faculty meeting and institute day. And then, in the January, or some of them are presenting on Friday, they're presenting all of their learning that they've done back to their whole staff and do those application pieces. All of the schools also had their teams decide within their school improvement goals, what did they want to work on. So, if everybody's working on math backflowncy, for instance, at a given elementary school, the teams are going to go in and decide what that training would look like, how they want to measure that, how they're going to accomplish that. So, a lot of changes in professional development, which brought a whole lot of change on how we monitor that. When you think back to all the teachers got together in Hubble Auditorium and they listened to me talk, the monitoring of it was, "Well, I thought that was good. FIT was on our game today," blah, blah, blah. And then, you could forget about it, or you could, you know, apply it. This is a lot more work. After they've chosen wherever they went to and talked to, then they have to present to their staff or their team. They have to allow others to come and observe their classroom where they're applying that. They have to create a PLC goal that is measurable off of that professional development. Some of the schools have now a whole shared staff site that their staff is required to post an application, that they use it with students, and put that on so that more sharing can happen. You can imagine, this is kind of tiring for staff. But I had a great conversation with a principal a week ago. He said, "Oh, my faculty meeting there, staff is like, 'Oh, we've got an institute day coming up, and it's just exhausting.'" But some seasoned staff said, "Well, this is what we're requiring kids to do all the time, right? Apply their learning." And it was, and it's great. And I'm seeing so much more real-life collaboration now that teachers are having more choice and are empowered in their learning, the same thing that we do for students. So, if you can imagine trying to keep all this professional development going, some of our roles over here at the Educational Service Department have changed to support that. This year, we created FIT triads. And what that is, is before, we had a district FIT committee, and they came in and met with me every six to eight weeks, and then went back and, you know, gave out information. We've only met twice this year. And instead, we've had the principal, a person from district FIT committee, because every school has a member on it, and our LLC directors take over, where they are deciding how are we going to bring the professional development with the staff? How do we keep the conversation going? How does that communication happen? But that's a lot of work to put on them. So, each of the FIT triads has a support person from over here, and all of the people up there have taken three to four schools that we meet with, with their FIT triad, every four to five weeks, and get together and talk with them, how they communicate, how are they working on their goals. Sometimes, that means that one of us is coming over to do one of those trainings on institute day, but it's all about keeping the conversation going. Here's some of the reactions from staff about the FIT triads and where that process is going. Everybody is saying collaboration and sharing of staff have increased because they're owning this process. Lots of people are talking about, "They know what the teachers down the hall did now and can celebrate that fact." It's bringing a lot more flexibility with teachers because they're seeing how other teachers are conquering some of their same issues. All right. Now, I'm going to move to FIT survey results. If you look, this is the second year that we've done it, we got a lot more responses this year. And some of that is because of the conversations that buildings had. We also had a lot more high school participation in the FIT survey this year. So, it's a little bit more geared toward high school results and that increase in responses. One of the questions that we asked, "Have you been working on designing learning environments?" I'm disappointed with this because we had 90% of the staff. But high school has had such a big focus on PLCs that when you talk to them, they're like, "Oh, but we've really been working on PLCs." Well, it's the same thing, but we need to get better at communicating a little bit of that. But 1% is not to worry. Here's where it gets a little interesting, especially when you get to the second graph, but don't look yet. All right. So, designing FIT learning environments, has it increased student learning? Look at engagement. Some of that is the impact on the high schools where they've been doing a lot of Kegan training and how do we get more students engaged, but a really nice jump in our students engaged in our classrooms. Preparedness for the future is a little bit of creativity, is a little bit of collaboration. And when you look at the next graph, you're going to see something that goes down, and I'll tell you why that's happening. Ownership of their learning is going up. Communication skills. Last year, our focus was on collaboration and creation. And when you go and talk to people, which I did when I got this, they're like, "Well, Faith, you've been talking to us all year about how we need to get so much better at writing, how the kids can't communicate with videos, how we need to have them so much better in doing that communication process." So, part of me prepping them for what we need to do, they've also now owned that they're not as good at it, if that makes sense. We've been talking a lot more about students getting up and demonstrating their skills. So, I think staff is getting a better, more true picture of how our students are doing in that area, and that is an area that we're going to need to address in the future. Pursuit of learning beyond the school days up a little bit. Ability to apply is up a little bit. None of the both stay the same. Also, with that staff survey, we asked them, "Where do you need more professional development?" Number one answer is still differentiation, personalization, and individualization with a close second. And this was very similar to last year, too, of blending all those different components. Our really skilled teachers can do knowledge construction, can talk about contextualized learning, can do standards mastery all at the same time. Our novice teachers, like, "Well, I'm doing higher order thinking, and in 20 minutes, I'll do creativity, and in 15 minutes..." And it's a real art to put all of these things together. And so, we'll be building some training for that next year. I'm going to segue just a little bit to talk about PLC data. This survey's been going on a lot longer. And I'll start off with elementary data. Has your PLC, you know, if you use data to change instruction, going up a little bit. Better meet the needs of students who didn't meet the standard, up a little bit. Kind of across the year, an elementary thing's a pretty good. Middle school, however, takes some points down. And I've met individually with each of the middle school principals, and some of this is due our middle school staff has much more new teachers than any of the other areas. Like, Monroe has 25 new teachers in the last three years that weren't here for the first big push on PLCs, and they're realizing that they need to go back and do a refresh, especially with some of their brand-new staff. We also, as a district, need to work with the staff that are singletons. Like, if you are the LLC director at Monroe, your PLC is, you've got to find time to meet with any of the LLC directors at the other schools. Staff is, the singletons show up a lot on this, that we need to help them find a way to, whether it's using technology, whether it's conference calls, any of that, so that they're finding more time to connect. Because the teachers that don't have anybody else at their building that teach the same subject that they do are really lacking in finding PLC time. So, that's some of that. Then, also, has an increased student learning? Some of the staff, I'm realizing, is talking with them, that they're saying, "Has it increased student learning this year?" And they're saying, "Not yet." Well, when we devised it, we were saying, "Has it increased learning since it started?" So, we're going to change the wording on that question for next year to get more clarity. High school, look at the jumps. Now, if you recall, we have a delayed start every week to give high school staff members time to do this, and it's really showing nice results. This is the breakdown by elementary, middle, and high. And again, the "too early to tell" is a lot larger than the "no's." All right. Now, I'm switching over to universal access data. So, there are a variety of questions, but the most important that we take away is, "What percentage of staff said they need more devices, but none were available either daily or often?" Here's where we were in 16, 17, and then 17, 18. And then, a little bit of the same question, but a little different, reported a lack of access to devices as hindering the type of learning environment. Because you can use tech to do the exact same thing that you could do without tech, and we want to know the difference. So, if it was just that you wanted to do an electronic worksheet, we're not as worried about, "Is it changing the type of learning that you could do?" We were at 14%, and we went to 21%. Now, if you haven't already looked, take a guess, do you think that that lack of devices is more coming from high school, middle school, or elementary? Because this is how it breaks down. Elementary, across the board in both areas, is saying that they do not have as many devices as they would like. Middle school is a little lower, high school, less than that, and then the district average. Remember Paul Harvey? And here's page two, okay? Page two of this is, if you break down some of this data, because Rod and I and senior leadership team have looked at it by school, in some of the elementaries, you might have 80% of the staff from a school saying, "We need more devices." Rod's able to pull up and look on the cards and say, "Huh, you have a lab card that has not had any computer on it turned on in the last five weeks." "Huh." That's a different story than when Rod can look at the devices and think, "Wow, every card's being used. They've been on at least two hours a day." So, some of this is, yes, we need more devices. A lot of it is, we need to help principals know how to structure the checkout system and how things are monitored to be able to utilize the devices that we have. In talking with some staff, they're like, "Well, it's just, it's inconvenient to walk to the classroom next door to get them." Well, yes, we'd all like to have a stack here, but if you just have to go next door to get them and they're available, that's a very different dilemma to solve than there are none around. And we have to address some of that. So, Rod's been having individual meetings with the principals. I've been working with teams. Some of the really great strategies that we found out, people are using cards and not putting 30 in every card just because they'll hold 30. What's your highest class size? All right. "I'm only got 22, so take those two and we'll move eight out." Some principals hadn't done that yet. So, we're learning different solutions to help with this. I'll move on to fun Google facts. 193,000 pieces of activity on Google Drive for February. Share activity, and if somebody had mentioned that they had looked at last year's, some of that's actually down from last year because now people are going directly to Google Docs and not going through Google Drive. So, they're still being able to use all of that, but their path to it is not showing up on this. So, if you look up last year's, you'll see that a couple of these are actually lower, but that's not because we're not using it as much. 18% of all the share activities happening after hours, which is great, and Google Classroom continues to go up. The characteristics and the utility of Google Classroom, I'm so glad we didn't go and purchase a learning management system and be able to, really wrestled with that decision three or four years ago. And I think it's turned out to be very wise because we're using Google Classroom for free. Some other fun facts. If you remember what DreamBox is, that's what we purchased for third, fourth, and fifth graders for everybody in the district to do differentiated and personalized math lessons. As of February 14th, this district had done 325,000 lessons on math. I looked it up right before I came here, and we've had another 2,000 since February 14th. Students, if you talk to teachers that are using it all the time, or loving it, they're using it after school. It's so great when you're sitting and it's about time for lunch, and the kids say, "Do we have to go to lunch? Can I do more math?" Really great. Also, just something fun, CSO is a free app that a lot of people are using, and we've had 14,000 artifacts that have been posted on it. 14 of our schools have given coding experiences this year. And then, this has nothing to do with technology, the last one, but it really has a lot to do with FIT. We've had 60 teachers that have used their own time to go through and work with either me or Julie to audit their classroom games for differentiation, meaningful contributions, higher order thinking, get rid of the ones that don't do all of those things, or improve them to be on this. Emerson is doing a great job with all of their games and has really seen an increase in not only achievement, but engagement and laughter around their math games in particular. And then, I wanted to give the Student Excellence Foundation a little bit of kudos. The production studios have really changed things. Middle school students, if you haven't seen the talk show on cyberbullying that some of them put together, great, great piece. Our EL students love that. They love to be able to use their language and practice it enough to become fluent and then share. A lot of schools are doing that. And then, a lot of my math coaches are having weekly video presentations that demonstrate a math concept, but the kids are doing that piece. So, some action steps from all of the stuff that I've been talking about tonight. We need to continue to build staff learning around the FIT vision. When I go around and talk to classrooms, talk to principals, talk with staff, having staff learn the way that we want students to learn is having a huge impact. We also want to continue to build leadership through FIT triads because it's not just over here that's going to develop all of those communication tools and ways to monitor and support staff. It's got to be a team effort down at the building level as well. We need to work on designing curriculum and activities around student communication. That's something that we had already put in the draft of Vision 2022 and identified that, but definitely the FIT survey data talks about that, too. And then, we need to make sure our new staff is trained on the PLC process. I also need to work with the middle schools to address those singletons so we don't have anybody feeling left out. And then, Rod and I need to continue to work with principals to design better ways to distribute and share all the devices to make universal access a lot more effective. Okay. Now that I've taken a breath, what questions do you have?
I have a couple.
Yeah.
I can talk about them. How can, I'm looking at the survey results, and so, how have our assessments changed to match FIT?
On standards mastery, like, that type of thing, those assessments have not changed. There are multiple choice, there are higher order thinking, and we're working, you know, making those questions a lot more rigor. But the assessments where students, the district collects, I don't think you'll see that much of a change. But the assessments that are the common formative assessments that teachers are giving, example that pops to mind is Morgen at Franklin, where students could decide that they were going to give a speech, or they could write, or they could, even do a skit, to be able to demonstrate their knowledge of things that were happening in elective classes. That type of learning that is here from the assessment is not easily gone into a standardized piece that fits one mold at the district level for district data, but the classroom level and the individual approaches where you see a lot of those changes, whether there's more performance-based. When we had met with the Student Learning Committee, you saw some of the changes in the high school finals, being more project-based, more writing-based, more the Socratic seminars that students are participating in where they have to prepare enough to teach someone else and then ask questions, not do a multiple-choice answering. So, assessments are changing to be more performance-based, but those are more at the school and the classroom level than they are at a district level.
Okay. A couple more questions. At middle school, do we still have time for team planning built into their schedule? Didn't they have a period that was like a team period?
They do. They still have that opportunity of that time.
And can our LLC directors join something like that to be able to, or are we looking for just sole?
They could. It's a smaller chunk of time. Like, if they were to drive to meet the other LLC directors, it's not going to go very well, but they could join another PLC. What Lee Cook has done is we do get all of the LLC directors together almost once a month now for a big meeting, so that's helping them have a PLC. And certainly, a lot of our LLC directors will float in and out of social studies PLCs, for example, to work with that, but that is not their home-based PLC.
And then, last question. So, how do we communicate this with parents and community, all these changes that are happening? It's a very different style of learning than what they think maybe have.
Right. Well, thanks to Erica, not too long ago, was that two weeks ago? Not too long ago, that we put together a video and used, Lee and I, Jeff and Erica interviewed us to create a video about not only kind of what we're doing, but a lot more of the why we needed to do some of these pieces, and that was just round one of what we intend to do. We'll be sharing that out. And we're also working, the three of us plus Lee, to come up with a template that is kind of like a commercial template that other people could, other staff members could feed their information or their video or their picture into so that we have more examples with students and staff to be able to show small snippets, but have it have a common format to it so that people know it when they see it, and is another example of that.
I think, too, Erica, you did the at Washington School where parents were invited. I think even more opportunities for that to get some parents into the schools to be able to see. I thought that was very exciting to see. Again, if it were seen.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there any correlation between the staff survey results from the survey that you gave for FIT and survey results that we're getting from the Five Essentials survey? I think that focuses more on students and parents to some extent, maybe.
There's a staff component of it as well, and some of that is the rigor of, you know, what's involved in the classroom. There's a question of, is the principal a good instructional leader? There's a process in there, is our teachers and all school staff working for the collective good of students? So, definitely, there's that piece. And for our staffs that are showing, you know, we work together as teams, we know where we're going, we have, you know, those plans, you see high results in both of those, both of the surveys that you talked about. Kind of another link to that, when Julie and I pour through all of the district assessment data, we find, like, what is happening at this fourth-grade team, they're top and everything? You call over and always, the answer is like, "Well, they're a really great team. They play all the time together. They work together. They do all that." And I don't know that it's causal because somebody who's a really good team member is often flexible and can communicate enough to also be a really good teacher, but the strength of the PLC causes a lot of staff satisfaction. It also causes a lot of student achievement. We see that measured in various different surveys to pull out those same results.
Faith, any thoughts on the PLC survey data, why we tend to see, for the most part, we see the numbers drop as you move from elementary to high school?
With the PLCs, usually that happened, except high school this year went up dramatically. And when we started with the PLCs with Mike Meadows and that training a long time ago, they said, "Okay, you need to think about how teachers teach at the different levels, and you need to expect different growth in the PLC process depending on the level." So, if you think about a typical high school staff, although I don't think our high school staff is typical anymore, that that, you know, I am the teacher of my content, this is me, this is, you know, all of those things, and I will close the door, they're not as team-oriented, it's more department-oriented. Where the elementary teachers have got three third-grade teachers, and we got to teach it all. We've got to figure out, you know, how to do all of this. And smaller numbers do make easier teams to be able to push that process forward. High school took a big jump in their implementation of PLCs, because they had more frequent time than they've ever had before. Where before, it's been two weeks, I can remember when it was three weeks of time. And to say that we're going to get together and plan and react to data, and I can only do it every three weeks, really difficult. Where the elementary teachers, where their right, their classrooms are all next to each other, they have lunch together, there was more opportunity for some of that to happen. Where middle school and high school are much more content-driven usually, and are more department-oriented than I teach the exact same course.
A little. So would it indicate that we'll never see those numbers kind of come parallel across the three groups? And if not, does it require a change in approach for high school?
I wouldn't say never. If you look at the high school pieces this year, and how much that they went up, you know, we got all the way to seventy-five, and I took some really big jumps, and they surpassed middle school this year. So I think it just takes more time to be able to get there. I wouldn't say it's on the table.
So a couple of questions.
Yes.
They're not data-driven. So this vision, I think it was like for the vision outline with the seven, I think it's seven kind of reflection guide?
Yes.
So kind of that, as I look back, have we been through all of those? What's left?
No, we have not had a district focus on all of them yet. We have not done knowledge construction, although a couple of schools chose that this year as their area. And we have not done higher-order thinking skills yet. Although that higher-order thinking skills has woven through a lot of it. But those are the two areas that we have not, as a district, said everyone is going to focus on. And the survey data is not bearing out that we're ready to do that yet, and also we met with the FIT committee. Like, let's talk about differentiation, personalization, if other schools are ready to do that. I think as we start working on our writing piece, there's going to be a lot more people saying we need to do knowledge construction.
So just kind of follow to that question, if you think about, so let's just say the next year, twenty-whatever, twenty eighteen, nineteen, and focus on that. Is there a next evolution of this reflection guide that kind of takes the next step for us? Because I would assume that as we go through this for a year, that it kind of gets embedded and continued even though we move on to another area of focus. So something about we're going to have been going all the way through this, as a district, this can be part of our natural teaching and learning approach. So what's next? Well, how does this evolve in the future?
I think part of that is how is it blending all together? You kind of see that as some of the staff results already, they're saying, well, we did training in this, and we did training in that, but we need help knowing how to pull all of this together in a lesson or a unit. I do not see us close to saying, oh, we need to revise this, redo, as we're working on parallel real-world situations, and you think about what we're trying to do with internships and with Vision 2022. Think about all the work on SEL, it's all in that piece. This year, there was a lot more emphasis on how we amplify student voice, which played beautifully into differentiation, personalization, and individualization. I think what you'll see is we'll have more students that are taking ownership of the choices and their learning, and how that reinvents a lot of the issues that are already on here. Standards mastery, if you think about what I was talking about four or five years ago, we were, staff was really thinking standards mastery is stuff on parks. Standards mastery is how do we do all this? Now, standards mastery, how would we have students that would write about it, or would give a speech about it? How are there different ways of doing those same types of critical skills? So I don't see us ready to revise and redo, but to go much deeper and have people understand all the different components, and to have them looking at how they assess and give grades based more off of this than what they're currently doing.
Faith, or can I just ask a follow-up?
Sure.
Related, this is really hot. My eyes are hot. The, so the base of FIT, the elements that made it on there, when you worked with a team to originally develop this, what was the driver behind identifying those seven elements?
So we came up with the vision statement, and you can see, you know, that we want learners to access, synthesize, and share knowledge. All right, what does that really mean? While collaborating, creating, anytime, anywhere. So collaboration and creation is a good example. There's three bullet points in there, but that's not the entirety of collaboration and creation. We wanted people to have some idea of what that would be in focus. For the buildings that have gone in and done, I'm reading standards mastery. Okay, formative assessments based on standards and learning targets. But they're redoing their formative assessments now, because they're at a different point than where they were before. The only breakout of those areas is to help the sentences above give more clarity and examples.
I like asked my question very clearly, so that's okay. So I, and I know this, because I've heard you do presentations a lot. The origin of why these things are important to kids have their roots in the employment and the future-ready skills that we know that they need to have. So I'm kind of tying it back to, I think, Brad's question. When FIT changes, I think as we monitor the employment skills that kids need to have, as we monitor the kind of the literature around, what are we preparing our kids for? There's evolution to that. There may be evolution to this, but I don't know that it's, in my view, it's necessarily like a wholesale, okay, we're done with this FIT environment, now let's introduce this one. But I think as some of those future-ready skills, employment skills, as we're studying career pathways and opportunities for kids, as those shift, I think this evolves over time.
Yeah, just to be clear, I love this. This is way more than important than whether we increase our SAT score by coming along with this. So I love this. I wasn't suggesting we need to change it. I would, I just want to, I mean, my motive is to try to make sure this is deeper, wider, more impactful for students at a more rapid pace, if that's even feasible. That's kind of what's my question.
Right, and I think the emphasis of being staff-learning environment, to have staff take leadership pieces of that, because you can cover this to a surface area, and then you can even, I'm thinking of time and location. All right, we're working on Google Classroom, having it beyond hours, we're working on having that. And now, all of a sudden, we've got a high school class right now that you can be in this semester, where you're in there for two days a week, and the other three days, you can go to the library, or you can work with teens, or you can come back and have time with. So our depth of application of a lot of these things will change as we see what students need. But like any good vision, mission statement, it also is somewhat un-prescriptive enough so that it can evolve and meet those new needs. So the conversation becomes more about, all right, what about our learning environment? What have we heard about colleges? What have we heard about students that aren't going to go on to a college, and are going to go directly to a career? And what do we need to change our understanding of higher-order thinking or contextualized learning to meet those than to redo the wording?
So another thing that I, we talked a lot about things that individual schools are doing. So how do we, as a district, pull those best practices, great stories, you know, into the district, and then kind of push that? I mean, how is the pushing into other schools happening? Is that just PLCs, or?
PLCs tend to be school-based, not cross-the-district-based. Some of the work has come from the FIT triads, because we go around and hear the really great stories that we maybe didn't hear when they're all coming together in one room and just listening to us. And then Rod will tell me something great that's going on at Longfellow, and then when I'm at Weasberg, I'm like, oh, you need to hear about what's going on, you know, and we'll connect those things. Also, the district FIT committee, they really miss coming in and being with us. And they've started to have lunch chats with each other, so that they, as they're now pushing their staff forward, they want ideas on how other people are doing it, because they're owning the process, not us owning the process, so that's happening with that. Can't say enough about Lee, that she's always connecting people and giving ideas, and a lot of people have her help. So she has an enormous file of already District 200-created things that she shares with lots of other people. Social media is also helping out a lot. If you talk to Kathy Milton at Mole, she talks about how social media has changed the dynamics of sharing within her own school, because a teacher will post, here's what we're doing in class, and the rest of the staff is on social media, and they'll watch the one-minute video, and they'll see the link, and like, oh, that happened in the classroom next to me, I would have never known, except that I saw it on social media, and doing those pieces. With this professional development way that we're doing with staff, it may not be spreading as much district-wide as we'd like, but there's a lot more sharing going on of best practices within teachers at the same school. And I have built it twice this year for elementary schools to get together with all second grade or all fourth grade of the whole district, and have some sharing time too. But it is something that I'm still looking for better ideas on how to do that. And a lot of time, it comes down to time, of how run new staff find those ways to look at the resources or interact with the way that we posted them to find out more of those things.
We've tried to transform the learning experience for our leaders as well. So we, you know, we've, I think, shifted the kind of the meeting structure of our building leaders as well to provide opportunities for them to learn and share from, with each other as well. So that's, you know, one other way that, you know, I'm careful in recognizing, especially around FIT. Sometimes there is an individual context to why something may work in an individual building or with a group of students that's not necessarily absolutely transferable to say just because that was the right learning experience here, it means it's going to be the right learning experience in every, you know, third-grade classroom. I, you know, I've actually come to appreciate more that I think the strongest learning experiences are those that are very intentional, right? Where the teacher in that classroom, knowing the needs and the opportunities of the students, you know, that are with them, where they're very intentional about what they're doing and why they're doing it. And sometimes, when you try to then just take that experience and replicate it everywhere, it's not as intentional. Does that make some sense? I mean, I've really appreciated, you know, at the leader level, we've tried to balance that.
Can I just move it? I'm not turning that on, because it's making that noise again. So how are we having conversations with colleges, for example, in terms of what they are wanting? And, you know, I guess, I did the math last year for post-prom for Wheaton North, and saw where everybody was going. And it was very eye-opening to me that we have shifted from a lot of state schools to a lot of private liberal arts schools, where our students are going, which is a more shifted, heavy writing, and so how are we having those conversations of knowing where our students? And conversations with COD, for example, too, of what they are wanting in students?
The high school counselors and guidance partners do go out and interview and look at different colleges and have conversations with that. The good thing, and also the more complex thing, is, as you know, recently going through the process, not all colleges are looking for the same thing. There are some that are like test scores, and that's pretty much the answer you're getting. Other people are like, we want to see a writing example. There's a growing piece where you have to create a video of yourself, and, you know, what are you about? And how is that, you know, going to play in? So there's a wide variety of skills that not only colleges are looking for, but what departments within colleges are looking for for that. And we've got to be prepared, and I think with this faculty, it helps broaden that perspective, that it's not just a test score, and prepare all of our students for what they're going to do, whether it's that communication style, whether it's being able to do video, whether it's that high degree of SEL. All of those pieces will play into being successful, not just for college, but also for that. So it is an ongoing process, but our high schools do spend quite a bit of time going to visit colleges, talking with them when they're here, reading their college fairs and those pieces. What do you mean? What are the criteria? What do you look for in an essay? To make sure that we're adapting to what colleges are changing to.
Faith, you mentioned in your presentation that sometimes our new teachers are focused on one element of our reflection guide, and then they focus on another element. Where our more experienced teachers know how to build a lesson plan to build in the various elements. Where do our new teachers pick up that skill? Is that something that you focus on at the building level? What's available at the district-wide level? What's available at the PLC level?
I like to think there's three stages of teachers, and a really great teacher goes through the stages pretty quickly. But at first, if you're going to give a presentation, you are only able to think about what I'm saying. Like, I'm looking at my notes, I'm doing that first stage. And most people start in there. And then there's the second stage of, I'm watching your nonverbals. Like, oh, I probably need to say this again, or say it louder, or I'll think about it afterwards and change it for fourth period, because I wasn't very good on my name second period. Then that third stage is, I'm able to read the room, and it's really hot in here, and I'm losing you all. And then saying, okay, maybe I'm not going to do slides eight and nine, because we need to back up and take that assessment data from students and being able to do that. And you can't get to thinking about all of those things until you've got to stage three of being able to know your students, know how second period's going to be different from fourth period, know and how to react and change when things aren't going well. So first, we have to get staff to that point, and a lot of that's practice and confidence, and how are they going to do those pieces? Some of the Kagan training that we're doing, that shows how you demonstrate all of that, that helps. Our math coaches at the elementary level are spending a lot of time talking about, yes, we can get better at standards mastery for math, but if we can differentiate and we can collaborate, and we can do a lot of higher-order thinking skills at the same time, and go ahead and model what those lessons look like, that helps. When we work on performance-based assessments, you can't help but do multiple pieces of the FIT learning environment. But if your mastery in your assessment is multiple choice, you start thinking about, well, I'm going to have a different assessment for collaboration, and I'll have a different assessment for contextualize, I'll have a different piece. The performance-based assessments, which are harder to write and harder to evaluate, incorporate many more of those at a time. And that, the revision and the refresh of the PLC process gets to that piece.
Faith, on one of the staff surveys results, I don't know if this slide was on, quite frankly, it's the one that has increased student learning. That was the question, it was going to be five categories. And communication skills disturbs me, quite frankly, because, well, I don't know what it conveys, but anytime a communication skill drops six percent, that troubles me. But I guess, how did they determine that? How did they know that it dropped six percent year-over-year? What was, what were the tools that were used to determine that communication skills have degraded, if you will, six percentage points over year-over-year?
This is a staff survey on their perception of how their students are doing. This is not off of the district writing assessment or district speech assessment or rubric. So as we are moving to performance-based assessments, where you would have students write more, speak more, give presentations, and also as I'm out talking about how we need to have students being able to create or reduce technology tools, there has been an increased awareness of, oh, we need to work on that, and we need to do that. So I don't think that, like, last year's writers are, even the same writing assessment, are down, but our staff is realizing that in order to really be a solid, you know, current communicator, you're going to need to be able to do so many things with technology and you're going to need to be able to do so many things with technology and tools in order to do that. And our own staff are feeling like, oh, I'm just getting used to creating videos myself, more or less being able to teach students how to do those pieces. So part of my job is to help staff see the need of where we need to improve. And I think you're seeing, as I'm having conversations and principals are having conversations about where we need to work on, we're talking about communication a lot. And you're now seeing that staff is saying, oh, I don't think our students are where they need to be.
But it's safe to say that these survey results are really just their opinion based on their gut feelings? Is that a fair statement?
Yes.
One slide that says, have PLC to increase student learning. Staff answers for all parts of the student learning question. Do you have at your fingertips the year-over-year percentage changes?
The math is this one, I'm sorry. Sure, so if you look back, whoops, let me keep on it. They're broken down for year by year by elementary, middle, and high. I can get the aggregate as well, but this has the questions of, for elementary, have we better met the needs of students who do ELO?
Let's just go to the summary one, because I'm sorry, it's the, just the percentages.
Yeah. I, for the district level, I have it in my office. I presented it to you tonight for how we're doing, broken down by elementary, middle, and high. They're not very different in their application. So this is the same question from 1213 to now about has student learning, has this caused an increase in student learning for the kids that were already above the standard, those who are below, and in general? So you can generalize, but I can send it to you by district as well. Where we started out with 1213 on the high school slide, had 13% of staff was saying that PLCs have increased student learning. This year, we hit 76%.
But again, there's, there's no quantitative data that bears that out. True statement?
You ask me this question every year.
I know.
So the district assessment piece, like, we've seen some improvement in district assessments scores or that, but can I say it is the PLCs? Right now, we had some great second grade district math achievement. Some of it is PLCs, I think some of it is the math coach, some of it is DreamBox, some of it is. So it's very hard to say when we see an increase in student learning that this particular system or piece is the sole reason that we saw an increase. And I know each year I don't answer your question totally.
And this one other slide here on the universal access.
Yes.
That's a pretty interesting, where they say reported, reported needing more devices, but none were available. What, what does that mean to you guys?
So that can mean different things. That could mean that, like, that a third grade teacher, like, did it in school, that she'd really like to do something with her students with devices at one o'clock on Tuesday. She goes to the way that they check out and there were no devices available at one o'clock on Tuesday. And she's asking how often that happens. That could be that all the devices were being used. That could be that there's a whole bank of devices that she didn't have access to, that that's how the school has divided them up. It could be, I didn't want to go down to the library to check out the devices that I needed. I'd really like them in my classroom. And all three of those scenarios are real. When I talk to principals and Rod, hopefully they chime in as they should want. Enough of, and thank goodness Rod had all of this data. Very, very impactful if you have devices that have not been turned on in 30 days and you have staff members saying, we don't have enough devices. That's not necessarily to blame the staff members. Sometimes it's how they have them organized or how they have them checked out. But we've got to make sure we're utilizing the resources that we have before we can say we need to go out and purchase a lot more devices.
I can tell with three of the largest buildings that would have made this percentage to where it's at, 24, because they were, they were reporting that, I don't remember off the top of my head, 60, 80% range of their staff. And even their principals were, you know, it's, they don't think that's the need. And at, at that time in their building, not all of their devices were on. So again, it could be how they're sharing. It could be the third grade who's borrowing another cart and the other one's down too far away. So it's not that there were no devices, it just might not have been more of a feasible than it is anything else. But most of the principals even said that, you know, looking at again how cart structure and bringing in more devices. Faith, using the example of 30 in a cart for a 22-room. Well, we do have some buildings that actually have five in every room and their cart only has 17 in that case because the five plus the 17 makes the 22 they need. In that aspect, you've got six carts now that gain 12 more. You have more for distribution and everything else. So depending on how they've all shared it in every building.
And building layout is a, is a factor.
Yes, of course.
Building the elementary schools that have two stories, it's very difficult to allow just to get each.
So you see it more as a, the proper deployment of the products, not that there's a shortage potential?
That, that's one part, yeah. But again, if all third grade wants to be doing one thing at the same time and they want all kids on devices and they have a cart and then maybe access to the fourth grade, but there's four sections in that building of third grade. There's no way for that to happen unless they're sharing devices. So they might have gotten 15 devices and have been able to do a partner product, but what they wanted to do was having everybody on, so.
I think, I think you'll see part of that answer bear out too as Rod goes through the master tech plan. Because one of the things you'll see in the master tech plan is we've not recommended adding to kind of our aggregate number of devices. I think we believe there's some strategies we need to look at and how those are deployed before we would bring to the board in the future a recommendation for more, just based on, on that piece. And I, what I was going to say on this is that Rod and his folks, I think, have done a, a great job of making some of their analytic tools around the use of devices available to our buildings so that our buildings can, can start to dig into that. And again, you know, even if it's not an issue of, of amount, even at the high schools, they've started to look more at, well, you know, this bank of devices not getting used as much. Maybe that's truly based on the learning needs in that department. Just don't make, you know, the access to devices as important. So let's take some from here and shift them, you know, over into, to this area so that, you know, we're not, a computer's not going to be on 100% of the time, but we'd like to see that number come up before we bring them.
I have a question. Has anyone had a chance to look at the schools that are, where you're getting the data saying, we don't have what we need and schools that are not telling you that to figure out what are, how are schools doing things differently? Are you sharing that information to, you know, to help efficiencies some places?
We've had the elementary principals meet in small groups. And I highlighted some people who had a, a high degree of satisfaction with the number of devices, share out how they're doing that. That's where some of that aha of, don't put all 30, you know, computers in a cart just because it holds 30. To be able to do that, we also met as a group, your middle school, to talk about that as well. And some people have said, well, I know this teacher uses it all the time, so she's going to have it in hers all the time. That was a good way to start when we were trying to see how that is. But if those are that teachers all the time and there are two periods a day that she doesn't teach, we should make those accessible to the classrooms around her to be able to do that, to learn. And that was something that was born out through those conversations as well. Also, how do you do checkout? We're really encouraging people to use Google to be able to do that. So I can look from my classroom and see, are there any available at one o'clock? As opposed to, we had a couple of buildings that were still a signup sheet. So now I've got to walk to the library to see if they're available to do, you know, those pieces. And that, that prohibits some stu-, some teachers from using it because they thought that process was too cumbersome. So we're having them meet in groups to do that. Some solutions are easier than, than others. If you're working in a two-story building, that's a helluva, you're not going to drag all of those computers up there. It also needs to be looked at how the PLC is using that. I spend a lot of time with elementary principals in particular, building their master schedules. And if they're building their master schedules so that every first period classroom has math at exactly the same time, the use just for DreamBox alone, if they're using that, can be really high. Where I'm, I'm helping them stagger their math time so there's common time to do differentiation, but it would all be that they need those devices at the same time. And some of the buildings that are building the schedules better are also helping the satisfaction of the number of devices that students have.
Any other questions or comments?
So I'm going to come at this from a different, I think this is a fun question. So this whole, at least it's fun to ask. So this is all about, you know, how kids learn, where they learn, what they use to learn, who they learn with. All that happens in the context of a class or a program that we're offering. So if you could dream and say, hey, school board, I, we'd really love to add this one different environment, some new class, new program, that is really going to allow the kids to supercharge their, their experience in FIT. What would be, what would you, what would you think might be the most?
And, and my thinking still within the confines of a class? Is that what you're asking?
How would you want, yeah. Sure.
I think when you can have some real-world problem solving that is where students have a chunk of time across disciplines to be able to work together and staff is more of a, I'll help you out here, where are your different ideas? And they're taking the teachable moments. You can't do that for all of education because there are things you have to learn. But if students, or I've seen it with staff too, where you would want to tackle, I don't know, how we're going to differentiate instruction for first graders. And they spend time figuring out how to do that. And we're there at the side, going, have you read this? What do you think about that? And they're spending time and then they come up with a solution. They've done that whole applied learning piece, they've done contextualized learning, they've done collaboration. It's part of having a really authentic problem and an authentic audience and giving that feel of what it really means to be in the real world, doing real work. I think is what best drives FIT. And there's ways to do that within the class, there might be ways to do that with your internship. I think the more that we're asking students, what would you like school to be? If you were going to design the lunchroom rules or the playground, what would it look like? And giving them more opportunities to not only voice their opinion, but have to back it up and argue over it and see other people's perspectives. The more that we can make that learning piece about solving a problem that isn't already have a solution, that they're working toward, well, I know the answer over here, but I'm not going to tell you. You guys go work on it. I think the more of that real learning happens and is applied. And, and it is different from first grade to high school, you know? Especially K-1, 2, we've got to get such solid foundation on literacy and math and, and have all those pieces. And but after that, the best learning happens when you're just so excited about it that you're at seven o'clock at night, you're thinking about how we're going to do this. And I've seen that happen in schools. You know, afterwards, like, oh, I've got this big thing that I'm working on. Or at my own work, it's two o'clock in the morning, I haven't figured this out, I'm going to go research it. That's when we can give those real problems to people. I think that's when FIT happens.
So, so why was it put a label on it? Is that proj-, project-based learning, PBL?
It can be. There are things that we can do without that context piece of that. But it's more about finding out what students are really interested in motivating them and making sure that we're taking all of those parts of FIT and bringing that to fruition, bring real work that interests them, which is, that's the example.
So I guess as a follow-up to that, you know, a few years ago, we invested in math coaches. And I, I keep hearing a lot about instructional coaches and the power of instructional coaches. Might there be a day where we want to invest in instructional coaches to, you know, how, how further, further FIT, if that's a right word, to try to?
Yeah, there's definitely advantages to doing that. You know, Ree tries to do some of it, I try to do some of it, Julie tries to do some of that. I work through my math coaches, my reading coaches, we're starting reading coaches at the middle school. But all of that coaching is in addition to all of the jobs that they do. You know, there, there is a list of things that I would love if we had lots of resources and lots of money and, you know, those things to be able to do that. So is there a big benefit to instructional coaching? Yes. Would we have to get really creative and figure out what else we could cut to do that? Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was asking you to dream because I don't want, I don't want to know the answer. I don't want the answer to be constrained by reality or resources. So what would that one thing be that would really push this forward even deeper? That's, whether it's a class or instructional class? No, this, this is a bigger discussion, not just like answer now, but.
People in staff coaching, figuring out ways to somehow lighten our principals' load so they have opportunity to have more of these discussions with staff or find ways to be able to do that. Our, our elementary school day is also a little short compared to, as we try to put in all of those things. So when you talk with principals, they talk about the need to have some, some more time in the day to be able to do the types of learning and activities that they do. Some of the movement that we're making at high school, we've given students more flexibility and to take ELO classes. We'll give some of those times during the day to allow some of the collaborative projects that I'm talking about. Make them more of a, a reality. Instructional coaches would be, would be great. And we're trying to build that model without adding extra FTE by having FIT triads, reading coaches, math coaches. Lindsay, Eker and I were just talking about how do we have some English learner coaching going on so that there's multiple people meeting with us to help all of us to improve with it.
I guess the reason I'm asking these questions is kind of what I mentioned in the last meeting about the ELC, the whole conversation about money and real estate and that about kids. I would like to have more conversations related to this about, you know, what we're doing to drive learning, advance, you know, the way kids learn and that. I know we do this all the time, but I'd love to elevate it higher, if, if, not just for the board, but for publicly. So that people can see that we have these, you know, really important, significant initiatives that doesn't get squashed by conversations around these.
I, I think one of the ways to do that, and I'm pleased with some of the turnout, is our community, whether you're talking about the budget or that kind of stuff, they're saying they're getting their information from their parent-teacher conferences or the neighbor who's a staff member, that, that a lot of that is where they're getting their information. Not necessarily the big newsletter that we put out, well, fans, it's a really great newsletter. But, but people get their communication from those small pieces. And the more that we have leadership at the building level with FIT triad and they're able to talk about, oh, the institute day that we just did, did this, 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 and this. Because did you know that collaboration and creation are one of the two skills? You know, and have more people within staff, very skilled and purposeful about what they're doing. They'll explain that to parents at curriculum night, during an assignment, on those phone calls. A lot of that communication is changing how each and every one of our staff members think about their job, talk about their job, talk about learning. Because it's those small dynamic conversations that sometimes change the perspective. You know, I, I would love to think that I could pack a lot of touring and get 500 people in and I could talk about FIT all the time. That I could, you know, that's, that's not going to get people there. So we've got to have more communication at the school level as well as the commercials and things that we're putting together at the district to really have our community understand the why behind FIT and some of the what.
Just like the board members, we have control over our own agenda. So if you have a topic you'd like to have discussed in the board meeting, please let, let us know. And we'll see if it gets into the agenda.
Let me ask one more question.
Take some water first.
So the survey question, is it a yes or no? Is it a one through five? Can you describe that, please?
When you ask a survey question.
Oh, sure. So we say, how often do you need more devices but none more available? Daily, often, sometimes, never. So we force them into.
Rarely, it wasn't often and sometimes.
Any other questions or comments for Faith?
Absolutely. As, as you transition, I, one of the things that I do, just want to kind of mention here in transition, Brad, which I think comes a part of the, the conversation as well, is that I, I'm. I, I'm continuing to see learning spaces transform across the district as well. Right? A lot of the concepts that we talked about in the last year, whether they be the improvement of spaces inside library learning centers, as you walk through classrooms and start to see different configurations of furniture and, and opportunities. Spaces are shifting as well, and, and that tells me that learning is shifting and is driving, you know, some of those space, you know, configurations as well. But, you know, happening actually in a way that's just really organic and kind of been fun to see how, how spaces have, have, you know, been able to, to shift. And that was, one last thing, I was just gonna kinda ask, because, uh, Jim, you've had an opportunity this year to do a little bit of coaching in the incubator program. And I'm just kinda curious, your, your, your reaction to coaching students through what I think is probably as much of a fit environment and class as anything that we have across the district?
Well, clearly, it's exciting for me because I, I love the, the business world and, and have been involved in startups and things of that nature. But just to answer the question more specifically, it, it, it really promotes learning, there's no question about it. I mean, it, it's not structured by any means. You know, your, your team's environments and there's a lot of interaction and a lot of, uh, a lot of free thinking and qualifying and qualifying and challenging. And so, I, I observe that and it's clearly in that, in that subject matter, it works well. I mean, I'm, I'm not a teacher, so I don't know those environments. But in that particular business incubator program, that's probably the best way to have that class is to really have it very unstructured, free thinking, throwing out ideas, a lot of collaboration between the students. And we as coaches or mentors just observe and then provide insider guidance as, as we're either asked or we provide. So, yeah, I, I wouldn't see that, that subject matter be dealt with any other way than the way it's been quite personally, that's my opinion.
Okay, we'll transition to Rod, who's now gonna pick up on, on fit and talk to the board about what we're projecting in terms of master tech plan needs for next year.
I said, sure. I'm gonna try the original mic to see if that, which is a bad battery.
Hey, Brad.
Do I need a mic?
I think it's when the remote comes close, whatever was in your hand comes close to the bottom of the mic, causing a little bit of buzz. Just a thought.
Let's try, but I, I'll learn something new every day.
You're not gonna...
Yeah, that's it.
I don't know, but just observation.
I am loud enough without a mic, I've been told that my whole life. The master tech plan, again, is the same format we've always done, is this even on? Okay. The master tech plan, same format, again, to help prioritize our needs. Biggest thing that it does for us though is, this is fit-driven. Again, eight years ago or whatever, when I started, we were trying to, you know, reinvent and get everything where we could do now. Where we are very supportive of the technology, kind of master tech plan supports what's happening in the classrooms and around the district. We have that capability where we're not playing catch-up anymore, so. Uh, this past year, these are the things we did last year that we would've been presented at this time. We've upgraded our main storage solution, um, from a network access storage to one that's built into our main system. We completed the third phase of the copy print deployment, that was a lot of the color. Saved us on the color in that final year, adding those many colors in a couple places that we found in the first two years that needed some larger capacity copier still. We did have our best response rate, um, for efficiency that we've been trending for the last seven years, um, which is, which is very good. We've refreshed over 10% of the classroom projection, if you remember, three years ago. We started taking over projection, we did the purchase for the first issue of flat panels to finish out the rooms with it, there was projection in every room. This past year and then beginning this year, we keep taking the number, the version or model of the projector. And instead of the schools continuing to buy bulbs, if the model is now in its sixth or seventh year, it kind of varies, we're now in version Epson eighty or ninety series and above, we replace the projector so that we're not throwing in bulbs that now only get, you know, maybe 50% of their expected light because the unit itself is sold. So, we're, we're seeing this constant refresh to where, um, the equipment in there can handle all the new frequencies and all of that kinda stuff where you're not getting those little refresh things through there, uh, through the screen. Then we also have a successful Windows 10 pilot that went on. Again, XP stuck around way too long, Windows seven is kind of already trying to phase out. What's really funny is business world usually, schools usually leave in that before business world, but some, you know, a lot of school districts will change their main servers. So, this next year, um, we will be going with the new laptops that come in next year that I'll talk about here are gonna be Windows 10 units, and we hope to be fully Windows 10 in the next two years. Um, but with, I don't know, maybe six year... I'm sorry?
Brave men.
Yeah. I don't, I don't work on that part of it. About, what would we say, about 70 or 80 machines we've got out there right now that are Windows 10? Teachers all over, they signed up to do it, we didn't make anybody. We said, if you would like to, and believe it or not, we got a handful of people that, because they're using Windows 10 at home, said, I'll be more than happy to try it. They've been able to use smart word software, all the upgrades, everything like that, so, uh, it's gone very well. We've got the five areas that we look at in the master tech plan, you have a copy of the actual, you know, the formatted master tech plan in there. Those five areas have not changed in the last four years. We're always looking at infrastructure and access in this one. In this next coming year, we're looking to upgrade the main core switches. Those were ones that were brought in, one for Hubble when Hubble was built. Then two years later, when we did the major network upgrade, this building and the two high schools, because of upgraded throughput, had different switches than the rest of the district. Uh, those are actually aging and failing on us. If you see when we say the phones are down, that's one of those switches that is failing. We had a port go bad, one little plug went bad the other day, the other morning. So, that is, uh, one nice thing with that is it still is E-rate eligible in this five-year E-rate eligible plan to replace those switches because they do work on our connectivity building to building. So, we can get 50% of those back, and I'll talk about that in a bit. We are going out for our 470 for our wide area network, that is how the buildings connect to each other. Our current five-year one is just ending. We are looking to go into a three-year one for that. Um, I can talk about that a little bit later too, but we are looking to, you know, possibly work with the city and the park district possibly on getting our own fiber brought in, you know, to where we will not have that recurring cost years down the road. If we own our own fiber, a lot of school districts in the area are doing that. So, we are looking to do just a three-year in this first run. So, we can plan for the next two years to do a switch over where we'll begin to own fiber along with possibly the city and the fire, or the park district. Then we're continuing to look to upgrade our internal connections, um, those internal closets where needed. Again, those switches we bought seven years ago, we bought with the knowledge that they are upgradable to handle more bandwidth. Where needed, we've been putting in 10 gig modules to upgrade so that there's not a bottleneck anywhere in any of the district. Right now, it's mainly being done at the high school secondary closets. Universal access and devices. Next year, we do have to refresh the Acer model. These, this was the, probably the first model of Chromebooks that were district purchased that came in. Some from face budget, some from mine, and a majority from title funds at that time. This is, there are approximately 1,300 of those in the district. This, these are the units that we were going to be refreshing anyways and part of our plan. But possibly we're gonna be able to hold on to a few that were still working. Except for Google just announced its next wave of which units they're gonna stop supporting. That actual model, the C720 goes out of support on November of 2018. So, we have to refresh them. One nice thing is, you only have to refresh them in an environment like ours. So, as part of our universal access, we continue to expand and provide for families. We will have those available like we did two years ago as the laptops went and converted to be able to work with now, again, the elementaries and students who we might have missed at the middle and high school who do need devices at home. We'd be able to wipe them and clear them out, get them back to normal. Google might stop support, but it's only stopping support from the purpose of our ability to update them all globally at the same time. An individual user who has that model at home can update that Chromebook on their own, and we can give them directions that, if you ever use the Chrome browser, you get a little red light that says it's out of date, update it. Our inability at, at, of come November 2018 is we would not be able to make sure they all stay current. Currently, all of our Chromebooks are one version behind on version 63, so they'd be ready for the new science test. We had to freeze them at 63, even though 64 came out. We would've lost that capability if we held on to any of those, so. That is one refresh we are gonna do, and again, it will help with bullet point number two. So, we'll have a, a large number of devices available for families that need them. We also have coming this year is again, the refresh of the first set of laptops that went out, the elementary version, the elementary model. That's about 650 devices is what we're looking at doing. With this refresh, we also have to update the, the docks that connect them to the projection and stuff. But it is actually a universal dock now to where we would not always have to be tied. Somebody came in with a Mac computer, they would be able to use our docks, it's really kind of a nice conversion. But that'll happen here and then, and you'll see information for that this spring as we start to bring in quotes and bids for, for those. The classroom, uh, needs, what's needed in the classroom to instruct, again, we've always agreed that everything needs projection, everything needs a way to capture with a document camera. Those are kind of our, our staples in the area to easily connect and project. We continue to refresh the projectors and flat panel displays. Again, we buy those, I don't wanna say in bulk, but we buy them multiple at a time so that they are ready to go the next day. If a bulb goes, most schools have one ready that they can put on a cart by using the next evening. Facility services will come and switch that out because we keep them on hand. I think some of you have toured Woodland probably. If you showed up the day after our delivery, we normally don't keep 10 TVs in there, they go pretty quick. But it seems like some people are like, oh, we got a lot of them in there. No, they, we do that, you know, we order 10 of those at a time so that they can be ready to go. We'll continue to support replacement document cameras, other peripherals is identified. And then one of the big things we've been doing this past year is working with principal schools individually as they're looking at ways to changing, um, you know, some new learning spaces in their own building. Looking at options for clever spaces, flexible learning spaces. Looking at new devices out there, new flat panels, touch panels. Connectivity seems to be a big change to where right now, we do need docking stations and cables running up to everything. A lot of the new things that are coming out do allow multiple different types of devices to connect via network. That does require changes on our access points and security and things like that. But it really will, if you think about it, most kids, when they walk in their house, know how to connect anything to their TV or it kind of brings that environment back, that a classroom is ready for a teacher to project or student with their own device could share something with the right security settings and everything that, again, as projectors and those things move around, we are continuing to look at those. You know, a lot of times on carts, you'll see a lot of the big changes are every, you know, you agree with projection. To me, that doesn't mean it has to be mounted on a wall. As we start to get to these flexible spaces and teachers teaching the way they want to, a lot of things now are coming back to more of a mobile thing so that there's not a front of the room and stuff. You just need projection or two in, in the rooms. A couple of you go around the buildings, you'll see a lot of the elementaries, they have smaller flat panel displays because, and, uh, next door has them mounted on a wall. That was the first round. After that, everyone started buying them on carts because they realized, you can put it to this table, you can push it to this table, I can take all three in this room. So, as we start to kind of investigate a lot of those things, we're trying to help out, making sure that the right devices and things are being brought in the buildings. Operational systems, again, this is what we do to do, you know, a lot of the day-to-day business. We are still looking, or we're gonna be looking this year at the Business Financial Human Resource System. Looking at possibly doing something at the end of the spring, um, evaluating everything at the end of the spring. We can probably bring in with timing, uh, with HR and businesses, maybe bring one department on first. You might have, we might still have to expense the entire thing at the front, but so that one lines up with our fiscal year, maybe we can start using just the HR system. So, we are looking to do that this year. Perfect timing because Bob's retiring and Bill's not here to argue with me about it. Right? So, it'll happen now, no? Yeah. We're also looking at implementing copy rules. No one's been waiting for this one except for Jeff Ever, if you've ever met him. We do now have that solution out there, and we've been monitoring it. We really, again, we are seeing tons of savings from the click rate and everything else that we've been receiving with those, with those copiers that have come in. We've gotten tons more functionality out of them. But we do start to, in years three, four and five of this plan, the smaller machines that we put up for, I don't wanna say convenience, but so that someone didn't have to go so far and could if the big copier, every building only had one big copier. Well, a lot of teachers like that it's right outside their door. I don't mean to say teachers, but a lot of staff like that this one's closer, so they go and run all their copies on the smaller unit. Well, those smaller unit now, they're gonna start to cost more per click. We're gonna direct them to the other ones. So, we are gonna start implementing rules next year, so we'll start to see some savings from those. Where they get the warning that says, you know, it's cheaper to go over here, please do that. Where they, like they used to years ago, they only had the one copier, it's just gonna direct them. That's for emergencies and for ones, twos, when you need a couple extra of something, not to print your weekly, whatever you needed for, um, class use. And then again, the Windows 10, uh, 10 system upgrade. Again, right now, we've been testing it with just the laptops and staff out there. There are some changes on the server side and the server connection stuff that we have to address and work with on the backend system too. Our, our support system, resistance support, this is the same graph. Again, the dark blue is this current year all the way up until January, I pulled the information. I guess technically I could've added February this year, but I've never added February before. We did it the last day in February. You will see again, a, you know, continual, as everything goes down, the total tickets by month, you'll still see right now in this, in January, we're, you know, probably about 400 tickets a month. But I think one of the big things that, that we've, that we've noticed in this year is the average open time by month. I, I attest a lot of that to, at, at the start of this year, again, we did not have turnover of staff in my department for almost three years. We did lose one this year who went, went to another position. But when we have a stability like that, a lot of times, we're not retraining, we're not doing systems, we're not having to show them how to do everything. But you'll still notice even at the, at the high months, in the August month, this year was drastically lower than even the previous year, the amount of tickets. But again, nothing new came in, it was the same laptops, the same docking stations, everything was the same. That a lot of the devices out there are Chromebooks, I don't wanna say that they don't need support, they do. But they're turned on in eight seconds and there's very little things that can happen to them. They can't get viruses, they can't, they don't work, they just put it to the side, one of our guys replaced, replaces it, and then they, they take another one. So, we've seen a nice constant trend, but I think right now, we're averaging, knock on wood, anywhere between 18 and 15 hour turnaround. And again, that's on a 24-hour clock. So, doesn't mean some things still don't take four or five days because some things only take us four or five seconds if it's, if it's just a password reset. But, uh, for the most part, we, we've seen a lot of great comments and things that turn around. Every other ticket that goes out, survey goes out to the person. Believe it or not, we actually are getting more responses on those now than we used to. I also reach out to those people, anyone who was dissatisfied is one of the, very dissatisfied or dissatisfied. Just to find out, you know, was it a miscommunication? Sometimes they're very dissatisfied with us because we can't fix something when we say we can't fix that because that's not fixable or it's, you know, it's beyond our control. That's why I always reach out just so, you know, that, that little kind of fine, final piece of, you know, we've done everything we can. You know, we really do kind of reach out, you know, to make sure that everybody's having out there. Okay, looking at these, those five areas and where are the expenses and everything that need to happen. For this year, these would be new costs associated, again, my budget's larger than 950,000. But right now, just to, to cover these, the, the five major areas that I just discussed, the laptop and dock lease, which is new, estimated to be around 150,000. The Chromebook refresh of about 1,300 could be about $100,000, similar to what we did with the last large Chromebook lease. Those would be a dollar out, uh, there would be no way to fund this and purchase them outright. The network updates, that's the iratable portion of fixing all of the switches at those four locations. Again, $300,000, that's a cost to us, 300,000. HR business solution based off of last year's estimate is about 225,000. And then the middle school security cameras, which was at facilities meeting? Facilities meeting was asked to put on, so we just put that on there, which would be, uh, is, is right now with our estimate to get those three middle schools done is $175,000. Looking at the pan, uh, as it's presented here, it's, um, costs that are coming off this year, things that were either one-time expenses or leases ending. It's 225,000 in leases ending, that's two leases. Network storage solution was a one-time solution last year, that, that, that money is, I don't wanna say freed up, but available now this year. Last year, we also did the main data center cooling, the air conditioning, that big thing that's out there that was split between, um, facilities and myself. And then, um, so maintenance, some software subscriptions that are falling off because of the network storage solution and some other changes that we have, we've converted the network access control, or I'm sorry, the network access storage and all of that, that software licensure and all of that ended, but we had to pay for it at the beginning. That, uh, right there totals 380,000. Uh, if we take into account the 150,000 refund that we would see for E-rate, again, for the $300,000 network upgrade, we would be able to get 150,000 rebate. We're looking at, um, additional funds from my current tech budget of, uh, two point three eight four, uh, four hundred and twenty thousand. Uh, one thing that's not on here, um, just to, uh, bring it to light was last year, we removed two hundred and ten thousand from the budget for the SIS. That is taken off. Last year, my budget was more than two point six, uh, so, you know, four twenty looks like a lot more, but, uh, if you were to put the two ten, or if the two ten wasn't there in the one seventy-five security cameras, it's still about a difference of about thirty-five thousand from what was in a plan two years ago, but then kind of changed when we saved money last year at the two hundred and ten thousand. I believe. That's it. Questions?
Just a real quick, so the student information system, what we chose to not do this year if the HR business was in the plan to be able, right?
Was in the plan to do this year.
To do this year. So we're still, we're going to go a second year now without student information system upgrade.
Rod, what's the cost on the, uh, Windows ten migration?
Uh, that's actually included, um, in, in part of our other, part of the budget that's not on there. We pay a yearly Microsoft licensing, um, that you guys approve each year, goes to the board, I believe in May or something. Uh, that licensing every year gives us all of our server CALs licensing and licensing for any device that we have based on a teacher head count. Uh, so even if we were to add three thousand devices on top of that, we don't pay extra for Microsoft licensing. It's, it's part of our, the way they license it, it's called the EES agreement with schools. So that, that's included in the budget, the Windows ten upgrade doesn't cost us anything.
And one final question, and Brad just mentioned it, with the, uh, student information system, is that thing, is that platform stabilized? Are you getting less angst with it? Is that kind of why we just kind of put it aside and want to look at the HR component?
Yes. Yeah, I, I believe so. I mean, I, you know, I don't think everybody will always be completely happy with it, but not everybody likes Microsoft Office either. I mean, it's, um, it, it hasn't had any issues this year. We have gone through one minor upgrade and one larger upgrade without issue this year. One happened, um, over break and, uh, the grading scale, uh, the grading's time and the, uh, fluctuation to the second semester, everything hap, went fine. Um, we haven't had any, any major issues with it, so.
Hey, Rod, can you give us a point of view on cyber threats and the context for the district, really the threat context? Because everything's vulnerable, but what is, what's the reality for the district?
Uh, on our vulnerability or what, what could possibly, yeah, I mean, I guess we're in the same. We're probably in the same as most other school districts are. Um, we use two or three different type of threats depending on where the server sits, um, for where our financial information is, without giving anything away to a TV thing. It is, you, you'd have to really know where it's at in a, in an environment to find that type of a system. Um, we have vulnerability scans that run on a nightly and daily basis. Our firewall, the firewall that you approved last year, if you remember, one of the biggest things was threat per, threat prevention was added to that firewall. The older firewall did not have that. And then we also have threat prevention and stuff from our internet access and our LAN controllers through AT&amp;T as part of our solution that they also have, you know, something that sits on their pipe that watches everything that goes through, and most things that go through that get flagged, you know, um, have that, would have a certain signature on it where AT&amp;T would know what's happening. It can't completely save us from DDoS, that's probably, or, or ransomware. Um, yet we back up all the time, very often, that if a DDoS attack were ever to happen, we have a, we can get you back to where it was four hours ago, and we don't worry about the ransom because wherever they attach that ransomware on that server is now been erased and rewritten with something that's four hours old. If that makes sense.
So do we, do our staff have to go through any kind of training, safety training, you know, that all this? I had to go through work after my daughter's going through that, had to send, you know, you know, be aware of phishing scams through email. Does our staff have to go through that?
Uh, they don't have to go through it. We send out reminders multiple times throughout the year, when, especially when, um, when very specific ones come across. Um, I think the latest one that came across that actually hit us and went through Google, actually hit Google Drive, um, and it was more of a nationwide. We were on top of it quickly, I think we had seventeen people that did answer it. Um, a part of that is you try, have to try to be as proactive as you can, um, and just like anything else, companies out there jump on it and clam on it and, you know, for forty thousand, we can guarantee you guys that this won't happen. And I think we try the more proactive approach and we use a, um, you guys all get the district email. So you see the template that we use from the DOT. We say one, we're never going to ask for anything, and it'll always come across that DOT template. If it does, no one can mimic that template because I'm the only one that has it. So if they can't come across and mimic that template, they would know. Again, ignorance can happen, and someone can click on something without knowing, but, um, we try our best to, to be proactive. We also with all new staff that come in, um, every year we do a training, I think a couple of you come to those new teacher trainings where we have one entire morning with tech where we go through everything, and I, in my kind of funny way, tell them not to do these kinds of things. Don't, no, it's, it's, uh, they, they listen, they, they get it. But we have not yet had a vulnerability that's been caused by any of our staff, knock on it, but your folks will never say that kind of stuff, but we have not, so we've, we've gotten lucky with that.
So, Rod, does your company have to go through personal training to?
Correct.
Be aware of the threats that come into their email box?
Yeah, correct. Yeah, the one thing that we have now that Google did put in place for us because we are a G suite, is it, um, actually Jeff's account is probably the one, Jeff's name is the one that gets hit the most, um, and we work with the business department on it, but I can't actually give you the email, but there's verified email centers now. If it says like, if I log into a website, uh, where I want to send you news from Newsweek, and I say I'm sending it from my at CUSD two hundred account, there, it's a different thing, and there's a big bold underneath it that says, the sender says they're in your domain, but they're not. So Google in itself for G suite users, which is all schools, has added their own to stop phishing and filtering, things like that too. So they would miss that big bar and click past it if they didn't, but.
I mean, I, I just worry about, maybe, maybe we're covered in the system we use to Google, but I just worry about more and more often, everything is so quick, and you're just kind of clicking through, happens to me, and I click through, I never been caught, but click through stuff to get, so you can get home, and you're not paying attention and being as observant as you should be, and, you know, bad things can happen. So I didn't, I don't know if that's something we ought to consider for our staff to go through that dedicated training, I'll let the experts decide then.
Bob, can you add that to the GCN before you, before you leave in, in August? We can blame you.
Yeah, there, there is no doubt that the biggest weakness in the system and the best offense are our people. We say, we always say that, right? And it's from clicking on a wrong link somewhere, picking up a thumb drive and sticking it in, with some of these Chromebooks have USB ports I haven't looked at, but, you know, those kinds of things. And so just continual reinforcement of do's and don'ts is a huge benefit. Um, for company, you know, for corporations that can afford to do phishing training and testing and vulnerability, you know, uh, vulnerability detection and, uh, you know, uh, hire a third party to hack, to hack your, hack your entity, yeah, that's great, but that's expensive stuff, right? So I think just this continual reinforcement of do's and don'ts is critical, more than once a year, I, I would suggest, right? Um, but it's all the little stuff.
Right.
And, uh, so, you know.
That's what we do, we can.
And that's why I asked about the threat landscape, because, you know, you, we could spend a million bucks, but if threats, what's the, what's going to, what, what is the, uh, what are the implications of a, of an attack? You know, the, the ransomware, your district will not have technology operations for X number of days, but Rod responded with, you know, we have a, a backup we can store from, who may be down today or whatever it might be. But, you know, and so I, I don't, I don't know beyond that what we want to really invest in.
Right.
Because it does get expensive.
And we did too, if you remember, we switched to Sentinel one last year from Sopos, which was our virus protection, which does, uh, uh, attack most of those. A lot of things where school districts have gotten hit, it is a, a laptop or something that someone has taken home, and it has been infected at home, they bring it into the network, and the minute they plug it in, it takes over the network. You remember Sentinel one, one of the big reasons we went with that was because of the cloud-based technology that's built into it, that it will shut that machine off from a person's house the minute it's infected. So even if they bring it in, our servers already know this device and serial number such and such can't get on our network. I mean, so we do have those, again, someone could click on something in the district, you are exactly correct, but most threats happen when, and then it's infected when they bring it in and it's finally connected to your wifi or plugged into your network. Our system with that cloud-based security isolates it and quarantines it, allows it to still be turned on, but it can't connect to anything until someone has addressed it. We get notifications that say this, this device, this laptop is infected, uh, it would not get back on our network to infect anybody else. Its files would be, but of course.
Hey, I'm just sitting here, I can imagine a, a fit opportunity for kids to actually produce a video or some kind of communication that would go out to the, that would be kind of interesting.
Yeah.
That'd be good, authentic learning.
They would love to dress up in like the little Hamburglar things like. You're right, my mind just went to it too, this would be great.
Rod, if I may, Jim and I came out of work seven, oh, it's seven years ago, and we have found so far, technology, uh, over seven years, it's remarkable to me. I think I followed about seventy-five percent of what you were saying tonight on that show. Um, I'm, but, uh, it's remarkable, and I applaud you and I applaud being touched after for, for me, advances you there.
Any other questions? So kind of just, just next step, what you saw at the end of, of Rod's, our, our intention would be to, to try to build those pieces into our, our budget for next year. I'm working closely with, with Bill, especially around the security current cameras based on where, uh, costs come in. We may try to address one or two of those things out of this fiscal year if we've got some flexibility, uh, to be able to, to do that. Part of that's kind of, kind of depend on how a couple of revenue numbers track here at the, at the end of the year, but I think if they track where we expect, we may have some flexibility to be able to knock a couple of things out of this year to kind of lighten that, that impact on the out years, so.
Well, that's it. Any public comment?
No.
Oh, you have a comment?
Yeah.
Or a board comment?
It's a board comment. Do I have to get behind the microphone?
Yeah, three minutes.
It'll take a minute. So there's, there's a lot of conversations going on at different schools about safety and security, um, way beyond security cameras, and I guess if we're going to talk about future agenda, I, I think it'd be helpful for the board, maybe have a conversation in closed session about kind of the things that we're doing by our safety committee and have that conversation and get everybody kind of fully up to speed because it's way more than just security cameras and secure entrances.